I'd like to call the order of meeting today. It's a special meeting to bring forward two different groups to go look for us as a county manager. So, George, if you want to go from there.
Okay. Well, as the vice chairman said, we're down to two firms. One is the Mercer Group and the other is Slavin. And with us today first is Mr. Ellis Hankins. Ellis is with the Mercer Group. And I think, as I told you in my memo, prior to joining them, Ellis was the executive director of the South Carolina League of Municipalities. Prior to that, he was the assistant director, and then prior to that, he was the council for the league. So, he has a long history in local government here in North Carolina. And I think you've been with Mercer since 2014, I believe. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ellis, let him make a presentation, and after that, I've given you all out a list of questions.
We don't have them.
We don't have them.
They should be coming.
They should be coming down. I always remember the follow-up.
I think the first one you can skip because that is giving an overview, and I believe that's what Mr. Hankins is going to do first. Okay? So, with that, Ellis?
Good afternoon. Thank you, George. Good to be back here. My wife grew up in Buncombe County, so we get here often. It's always a pleasure. I'm Ellis Hankins. I did retire from my day job at the League of Municipalities a little over four years ago. I do a good bit of teaching now at the university level and still have my law license, so I do a little bit of that. But primarily, I'm a senior vice president with the Mercer Group, which is a national public sector consulting firm, which started in North Carolina because our founder long ago was an assistant city manager with the city of Raleigh. I did not do a PowerPoint presentation. I think I've exceeded my PowerPoint quota lately with graduate students and lawyers. But I gave you some written materials, which I know you have before you. You or your staff have our full proposal, so I did burden you with another copy of that. But you have an outline, you have an executive summary of our proposal, my biography, our proposed timeline, which is always subject to adjustment, and I want to discuss that with you, and one of our sample work products, which I'll get to, a recruitment brochure that I did for the Cumberland County manager search when I assisted the board with that. So, a little about our firm. The firm has gone by the Mercer Group name for almost 30 years. The CEO, Jim Mercer, lives in Santa Fe. I've known him for more than 25 years. We have members of the firm who live and work in 14 states, so spread out. And we're good at working together and helping each other recruit candidates for the city-county manager searches and other projects. The process, the standard process that we use is summarized in this executive summary, the second document in your package. If I may, I'm going to say just a few words about that and then the timeline. I want to leave plenty of time to answer your questions. It's very important to start the process with a very focused, facilitated discussion with you, and then I would say separately also, with the senior county staff. A discussion about what it is exactly that you're looking for in your next county manager. As Yogi Bear said, if you don't have that discussion in the first place, you might not know when you get there. So, that's a very important first step in the process. And after those discussions, and I probably also would ask you to give me the names of a few folks in the community that I ought to go talk to, interested citizens who have valuable opinions to share. Did that when we recently did a town manager search in South Kingstown, Rhode Island, and it was very beneficial. I also would suggest, as part of that step, on day one, the day I and probably my partner and the other member of this team, I'm going to mention in a minute, come here to meet with you all individually and with your senior county staff. And then, late afternoon or evening, we would suggest a board meeting as a public hearing so that your citizens have an opportunity to speak, whatever your rules are, three minutes or whatever, and give you, and so that we can hear their opinions about what they think you ought to be looking for. The work product that results from all of that is this recruitment brochure. And if you'll take a look for a minute at the one we did for Cumberland County, toward the end of it, there, after a lot of information about the county and the county government organization, toward the end of it, there is a long list of bullet points, and those came from the county commissioners and citizens and senior county staff about what they thought they wanted, what they needed, what they were looking for in their next county manager. So, that's an important document. We use that, not only as the roadmap, to guide the search and to guide us in our very active recruiting, but also, obviously, as a recruitment tool. It's called a recruitment brochure, and we distribute this widely to help encourage capable public managers to consider applying for your consideration. So, important document. We place ads in every productive place we can think of, obviously, the Association of Candidate Commissioners, the League of Municipalities, ICMA at the national level, probably the local newspaper. There are several other productive sites that we know of, and I would ask folks in some surrounding states about good places to place those among those partners in other states, some are close by in Georgia and in Virginia. So, probably the southeast is a potentially productive place for candidates to come from, and we would want to place ads in productive places in those states. So, the period runs, and all during that period of time, when the job ads are running, I will be obviously reviewing resumes, along with my partner, and making calls to the folks who appear to be very well-qualified and who meet the criteria that you've laid out, and start to form an impression of who the folks are and who the strongest candidates are. And that'll go on until several days after the application period closes. And then, and at the same time, we're doing, we're starting our background check of the most qualified folks with preliminary background checks, Google searches, that sort of thing, looking at newspaper stories from places those folks have worked. We will come to you, and now's probably a good time to flip to this proposed timeline for the search process. So, it's Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, County Manager Search, Proposed Timeline, and there are some meeting, some meetings and dates highlighted in yellow on there. The first board meeting I mentioned to talk about what you're looking for is the first one of those. Nothing magic about these dates. These are subject to discussion and adjustment. But then you approve it, and then that becomes the timeline to stick to. But if you look at the second page of that, says board meeting about November 26th or 27th, the week after Thanksgiving, for me to meet with the board to talk about the strongest candidates. We will have sent you before that, probably a week before that, a package of materials for you all to review, and it has several things. Primarily, a summary of the strongest candidates, and it may be as many as about 18 candidates that we present to you. I would guess, in a search like this, we're probably going to get 40, 50, or 60 applications, maybe more. I'll talk a minute about the way I see the desirability of this position, so please don't let me forget that. But we present that summary information to you. It's an apples-to-apples comparison on about five or six pages that presents to you, for each of those strongest candidates, their education, their work history, and significant things about them, professional licenses or certifications, or significant civic activities and that sort of thing, to give you a good concise snapshot of who they are. Then, obviously, we're going to give you the entire list of candidates who applied. I'm going to talk with you about the strongest ones, but we want you to see, obviously, the list of all the candidates and give you an opportunity to ask questions. Well, why is this person or that person not on the list that you are discussing with us, et cetera? We'll give you, for the strongest candidates, obviously, their letter of interest, their resume, and other information we have gathered about them. And then we'll sit down and have that discussion in a closed session, and I will assist you all, the board, in selecting a reasonable number of semifinalists to invite for an interview. Now, what's a reasonable number? It's up to you. But we suggest somewhere around five to seven. Less than five is risky because you run the risk of some folks withdrawing during the process. They accept another job, or they just have second thoughts and they withdraw. More than seven really becomes more than a one-day commitment to conduct interviews. And that's fine, as if that's what you decide you want to do. One of the searches we just did, they interviewed nine candidates, and that was most of one day and then part of the following morning. But it is a time commitment. So, I've called that group that you interview semifinalist. That assumes that perhaps where you end up after those interviews is you get it down to one or two. Maybe you haven't quite decided which one is the right person at the right time, the right fit. Maybe you want to bring one or two candidates back for a second interview, maybe with a different set of questions. But that is commonly done. And then the time comes when you decide, and that's done, and obviously, in a closed session, with me there to assist you. It's just a very deliberate discussion about relative strengths and weaknesses and harking back to what you said you were looking for, and which one of the candidates, as you heard them, comes closest to meeting those criteria. And just to you feels like the right fit. And once you've decided that, I hope by strong consensus, and I hope unanimously, but at least a strong consensus, then we will assist you in negotiating the terms of employment with the parameters that you give us. And then, once that is agreed to, the terms of employment, probably in a county like this, becomes a written employment agreement that we would work with your county attorney on. Can't draft that for you, but we can work with your county attorney. And then, you come into an open public meeting and vote to appoint the person and approve the employment agreement. And that is the process. Now, I've mentioned our team several times. The advantage you get and what you're getting with our firm, if you choose our firm and engage us to assist you with this work, you get a national firm, and you get everyone who is associated with the firm to be active recruiters, to reach out across the country and talk with folks we already know, in many cases, or go find out about, who appear to be well-qualified and appear to be a good fit to come to Buncombe County. And there are many of us across the country. And between us, we know a lot of city and county managers in many states. The second member of our primary team that we propose to work with you is Charles Penny. Some of you know Charles. Charles retired last year as the city manager in Rocky Mount, but before that was the assistant city manager here in Asheville. So, between Charles and me, we know Buncombe County well. I'm here a lot with my wife's family. Charles lived and worked here. And another reason that we wanted to add Charles to this proposed team, Charles is not formally associated with our firm, but I've reached out to Charles and have included him in proposals on our proposed team a couple of times lately. And the reason I did that here, and I was very pleased that Charles accepted, he knows everybody, and if not everybody, almost everybody, in the southeast, in local government management because he was very active during his professional career with ICMA, the International City-City Management Association, was an officer in ICMA. So, between the two of us, I think we can do a good job in working with other members of our firm in the active recruiting part of this process. I think we can do a good job of attracting a diversified candidate pool for you to consider, and I mean diversified in every way. Geography, candidates at different stages of their public management career, race, gender, diversified in every way, for you then to decide what you're looking for and which person meets that profile. We always suggest during the process that you keep a completely open mind, no preconceived notions. Don't decide upfront respectfully that you absolutely need a person from North Carolina. There are good, capable, experienced managers in other states, particularly close by, but completely open mind, and commit to each other to maintain confidentiality of information through the process in fairness to the candidates and to protect the integrity of the process. And you will hear that from us a good bit through the process. By the way, Charles Penny wishes he could be here today, but the governor appointed Charles to the Property Tax Commission, so he's in Raleigh hearing property tax appeals today. He would rather be here, but he sends his greetings. Our firm has performed city and county manager searches all over the country for many years, small towns and rural counties to large cities in urban areas. We, I'm very pleased that recently the city of Charlotte selected our firm to be one of a handful of firms pre-selected to handle department director and city manager or city attorney searches, if that happens. And I'm the lead consultant and project manager with the city of Charlotte, so we're pleased about that. We have proposed a fee to you that we believe is reasonable. It's a flat fee, $25,000. That is an abundant fee, certainly to, and fair fee to us, to allow us to devote the time it takes to do this project right and to help you bring it to a successful conclusion. We have put in the proposal our code of ethics that we always operate under, somewhat similar to the ICMA code of ethics that managers live by. We've put in our guarantees. Let me mention two of them. There's 10, but let me mention two. First of all, if we go through the first round and we don't present to you candidates that you believe are the right fit, and you ask us to go try again, we will do that. Now, that's rare, has happened, but we will work with you to be as active and as creative as we need to be in recruiting until we find the candidate that you are looking for. And if you, we complete this process, you make your selection, and the person starts work, but then it just doesn't work out. Say the person, say you ask the person, the manager, to leave after a year. Within the two-year period, we will come here and we will assist you in doing the search again, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ellis Hankins. And that is very rare, but that also has happened, and that's in our proposal. That is one of our guarantees. Let me, if I may, wrap up and just make a few comments about the dynamics of this search. This is a somewhat unusual time and set of circumstances for Buncombe County, and I regret that. You do. One of, I'm in a minute going to ask for questions and do my best to answer those, but let me answer one that might already be on your mind. How are managers in North Carolina or in other states who might potentially be interested in this position going to view Buncombe County because of the recent history? I think this is an opportunity. I'm pretty good at seeing silver linings and finding those. I said in the proposal, and I mean this, I think we will be able, if you select us, Charles and me, and other members of our firm, to go out and have straightforward conversations with good managers, with good experience, who we believe could potentially do this job well, and talk that through with them. And I think capable, experienced managers who have a level of professional self-confidence are going to view it this way, that they can come here, if you select him/her, and work with you to follow up on the work that your interim, your very good and respected interim county manager has started with other members of the county staff, to change the culture of the organization some and fix problems, the remaining problems that might need to be fixed. And I think folks would view that as a positive opportunity. Others might not, but you probably don't want those folks. What type of people should you be looking for? First of all, as I said, that's the first discussion to have in this process, but here's what I think, several different possibilities. You may decide that toward the end of the process, after you've heard interviews and you've had an opportunity to compare strengths and weaknesses of different candidates, you may decide that the best fit is a veteran manager. Maybe he or she is looking to come here as their last full-time professional management job and stay here seven, 10 years. It may be a real opportunity. You may find a jewel, someone with 10, 12 years of public management experience, maybe has become a county manager in a smaller county or a city manager somewhere else and is looking to rise to the next level, and you catch that person at the right time. Probably not a really young inexperienced person for Buncombe County now. I think, looking back, probably a young Steve Metcalf years ago probably was the right person at the right time, but Steve and I are not young anymore, and please tell him I said that. It really, it really does come down to the right person at the right time. So, Mr. Chairman, hello to you. Been a long time. I'm happy to stop talking and answer questions that you have about our firm or our proposed team or me or our process.
Great. Thank you, Ellis. Good to see you. Apologies for my late arrival from another meeting. All right. Who would like to tee us off?
I'll tee us off, and I'm going to go through these questions. Well, I'm going to do one, and then somebody else can do another. And Commissioner Belcher, it's good to meet you. Given the ongoing federal criminal investigation has now resulted in former county manager and to assistant county managers being indicted, how will that affect how you recruit for a new manager? You knew that question was...
I think I guessed correctly that that might be a question, and I think I gave the answer in time for the chairman to hear when he came in, and I believe that. I do think that there is potential to, for good managers with professional self-confidence but not overconfidence to be interested in this job and for you to be able to consider them favorably.
Okay. Thank you. Number three.
County Commissioner, how will you communicate with the Board of Commissioners and in turn county manager on your process throughout the search?
Well, we're used to doing that, and that is very important, and we take that obligation to keep you all informed very seriously. We do that, for one thing, on a fairly regular basis, weekly, every two weeks, whatever you all say you prefer, by email, with general information about where we are in the process and a status report. For example, we would tell you, obviously, no names of candidates, but as of today, we have 17, 25 applications in hand. We have talked personally with five of those and that sort of information to keep you appraised. We probably would talk. Depending on the extent you decide that you want your principal county staff involved, interim manager, or your clerk, or whoever you designate, we might talk with them on the phone on a regular basis, sometimes certainly with the chairman, if the chair prefers that, by phone, and we would always be available. We would need someone designated on the county staff to work with us on logistics. For example, to look ahead and think about where to have interviews and how to conduct those and to help us with those nuts and bolts. But we certainly would keep you well-informed about the process.
Robert Presley, Commissioner. The Board of Commissioners is conducting some citizen input sessions and the department head input sessions over the next two weeks. How would you dovetail those efforts into your citizens' engagement process and the creation of the county manager profile? I'd looked at a little bit what you've done at Cumberland County and...
Well, we always said in the proposal was about the public hearing at an open meeting to hear from citizens, but you certainly can go a good bit beyond that, and we would be happy to talk with you all and help develop that. And since you already have that series of discussion sessions scheduled, I think it would be fairly easy to dovetail, to add on, to make a discussion about what interested citizens believe you all ought to be looking for in the county manager position, part of those discussions. Right now, there's probably not much more that is any more important than for you all to get this right. This hot potato is in your laps, but it is a real opportunity, and it's your responsibility and your decision, but informed by opinions of interested citizens in your county.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Beach-Ferrara. Next question is, just how many onsite visits would be involved in your proposal, and when in your process would they take place?
Well, we're close by. We can come whenever you all might need us to in the process, but on that proposed timeline, again, subject to discussion alteration and then approval by you all, we come here for that one full day, discussions with some of your senior staff, with you individually, then the board meeting, which includes the public hearing, so that's one. And we would come back at least by about late November to talk with you about the strongest candidates and assist you through the discussion to select five to seven to nine of those for interviews, so two, and then interview day is three, and then if you do second interviews, that's a fourth trip. So, at least three, probably more than three, and we're happy to come whenever you need us to.
Ellis, are there other resources that the Board of Commissioners and staff need to be thinking about in order to support the search process above and beyond any that we've already? Obviously, we're going to retain a search firm, so anything else we need to be thinking about to dedicate resources, financial or personnel, to the process?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think so. You will get a lot of information from us through this process at each step when it's time. For example, when we get toward the time for interviews, and actually, when I come to, if you retain us, if, when Charles and I come here and meet with you about the strongest candidates, one of the things we will send to you in the package of written materials is... in advance is a list of potential interview questions for you to start thinking about and working with us to select to ask during the interviews. And, you know, interview evaluation sheets and that sort of thing. We will give you a lot of information to inform you through the process. I can't think of anything beyond that that you really ought to and absolutely need to go do, or money you need to appropriate, or anything other than to just pay the cost of the process with whatever firm you select.
Ellis, good afternoon and welcome to Asheville.
Sure.
I spent eight years on the school board here. Tell your wife I said hello.
I will. My wife is Lynn Winter.
Yeah, right. I know exactly.
Chief lobbyist for the North Carolina School Boards Association, so she's up to her neck in public education issues.
And in true transparency, I need to say this. Bringing Charles Penny with you, I won't hold it against you, but we've been friends for 30 years. I think I need to lay that on the table up front.
No wonder.
My question is, both the city of Asheville and the city of Greenville, South Carolina, are actively seeking city managers. Asheville is about three months ahead of us in their process, and we're unsure where Greenville is at this point. In your opinion, what impact will that have on our applicant pool?
I don't think it will have a significant impact. There are city and county manager searches going on in North Carolina and in the southeast and across the nation all the time. And for managers or folks who aspire to be a city or county manager, it's, a lot of it is timing. I can't tell you how many good people I've talked with over the years who I thought would be a strong candidate for a particular position, and they were interested, but it just, the time just wasn't right for them individually, wasn't time to move the family, or had only been in the position for three years and thought that was not a long enough commitment, and they were right. I never would talk to anyone who'd been there less than two years. That's the absolute ICMA minimum commitment, two years. You all probably have heard that. You know, there's another possibility. I actually know the search consultant who is working with the city of Asheville. She is with the firm headquartered in Minnesota, but I've known her for many years. In fact, I've talked with her about the Asheville City Attorney search, which she's also doing. I had dinner with Robin Curran last week. Consultants talk to each other, and we are sworn, obviously, to keep information confidential, but I will tell you, often we, certainly within our firm, but sometimes across firms, compare notes. It may be an advantage in some ways that some of the people who might have been interested in the city of Asheville manager position, and maybe some others that we are doing or that we're aware of, might not have been the best fit for that position, but for another set of reasons. Maybe their experience as a county manager or a deputy or assistant county manager in a large county somewhere else might certainly be someone that you all want to consider for this position. So, I probably, I would plan, frankly, if you all retain us, to talk not only a lot to other members of our firm across the nation, but to people like the consultant who is working for the city of Asheville, to go find capable people.
Thanks. I'm Ellen Frost. If you, this question is, if you, can you review your guarantees for the following? A, if the Buncombe County Commission is not comfortable with the finalist after competing the interview process? And B, if the Buncombe County selection does not stay with Buncombe County for at least two years?
Well, I can read you what it actually says, and I mentioned that, and those are important, and there are other important guarantees on that list. But what it says about, in the first round, not finding the right candidate, says, "If for any reason the client does not feel comfortable selecting a candidate from our original recommended group of candidates, we will continue the search until the client can make a selection." The only caveat is that we may need, in fact, we will need to charge additional out-of-pocket expenses, our actual expenses, only for this additional work, no additional professional fee. So, period. We will do that if it becomes necessary. It's rare, but it has happened. And the replacement, our guarantee number five says, "Replacement of successful candidate. If the candidate replaced with the client leaves the client organization for any reason other than a serious illness or death," which none of us can do anything about, "during the 24-month period following the date of placement with the client, we will replace the candidate." And what that means is, assist you through another process for the out-of-pocket expenses only, that it costs us to make the new placement. No additional professional fee, we just do the search again, and that's just part of the risk that we are willing to take on at the beginning. It's a guarantee that we think we need to make.
Just anecdotally, this is not on the slide. I'll ask you. Typically, how long does a manager usually stay in one?
The average tenure, well, these days, George, four, five years. There certainly are managers in this state and elsewhere who have been in the position 25 to 30 years. That South Kingstown, Rhode Island search that I mentioned, the manager retired after 40 years in the position. More often, it's a shorter period of time, either because the manager moves to another community that he or she views as the next level, or those folks are in a tough profession, and sometimes they just don't make it after a while or after an election. So, five years is probably about the average.
And I would just add, in a jurisdiction this size, if everything was going well, you could easily go eight to 10 years, because there'd always be a lot of new and interesting things for the manager to work on.
Amen.
I think we skipped number seven, so I'll go back to it. Will you need any temporary office space or...
I mean, every now and then, when one of us, Charles or I, or both of us, come here, we might ask Lynn to help us find a desk, a quiet place, and maybe access to a computer, but certainly no permanently designated office space.
You could use Commissioner Ferrar's office. It's a pretty quiet little office.
Go ahead with the next one.
I do have one that's not on there, if I could. You estimated, you said your fee was $25,000, but you also estimated your expenses at $7,500. Is that...
It's very, very likely to be significantly under that. We always try to write down a number that is realistic and then try our best to hold expenses down. Obviously, our offices are in North Carolina. I'm used to this drive. Charles is used to this drive. So, no airline expenses. There may be, probably me, no hotel lodging families here. The major cost items, the major one, is the cost of running the job ads. And we wouldn't want to run those broadly in productive places, and the cost can get up there, but it'll be well within that $7,500 figure. And we will send actual expenses for reimbursements, and if we have just estimated wrong, and I haven't so far, but if we do, then that $7,500 is the maximum. Okay?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Frost, sir, bringing that up, if we're wasn't happy with or they left, would that $7,500 still be a max? I mean, could...
It would. It would be a brand-new process, and we would have to run job ads and that sort of thing again, but it would be, it would be a new maximum set of expenses that we would just, we would incur, wouldn't charge you an additional professional fee, but we would look to be reimbursed for actual expenses in that second round.
Yeah, just concern you might be using some of the $25,000 for that, but it wouldn't go over.
No, that's, no, we wouldn't do that. That $25,000 figure is a, from our perspective, a fair and realistic professional fee for a process that is going to take a good bit of time and effort and expertise.
Did we have the last question? So, last question of our prepared questions, Ellis, is can you tell us, and obviously, this is, in this current context, is especially important. Can you tell us a little bit more about, once we have the finalists narrowed down, what's the process for doing background checks for the key, the key candidates who are on the shortlist?
I did not mention that. That's laid out in our proposal. It is an essential step in the process. I did mention that we do a preliminary background check before we come and talk with you about candidates. But once you have selected semifinalists five to seven to nine hypothetically to interview, I like to go ahead and do the background checks at that point. They're not very expensive. I don't like surprises at the end of the process to find that someone does not have an educational degree that he or she said they had, or they've left out a job that didn't work out well, or have fabricated something on their resume. I want to know that before you interview them. For one thing, that background check may disclose some things that are not fatal, but which you need to ask about in the interview. So, that's another reason for us to, and here's how we do those background checks. There are folks in our firm who do that and are used to doing that, and they're good at discovering things like master's degrees that don't exist, or master degree from an institution that's not a real accredited institution, that sort of thing. We contract with vendor firms to run the records, and here are the background checks that we do. Criminal and motor vehicle checks, credit checks, obviously, particularly with the recent history, these folks are going to be dealing with public funds. We need to do a credit check. If there's a bankruptcy, we need to know about it. Apparent financial problems, we need to know about it. And obviously, we verify work history and education. Very important step in the process.
Do you do any checking in last communities, like people who may not be listed on the references, like the local press or anything like that?
Reference checks. I didn't mention that either. It's laid out in the proposal. We ask folks to give us a list of references, and we do those reference checks, but I think it is, in fact, it's our firm's philosophy, starting with Jim Mercer years ago, to go way beyond the list of references that the candidate gives us. We often ask references. Who else should we talk to? And we go talk, and if there's somebody who's obvious but just, candidate didn't give them to us as a resume, mayor of a city where he or she worked as a city manager, or the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, or someone like that, often we will pick up the phone and we will call that person. That is important, and you can discover some interesting things, and usually positive with the caliber of people usually that we are asking about, but sometimes not.
All right. Great. I've got a question on the timeline, and I know we've talked about it. Is this timeline practical, 2/28?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And we had put in the RFQ, as y'all may recall, that the person had to be in the chair by February 28.
And because that was in the RFP, that was our guide, probably, and frankly, that, sorry, I keep hitting that, that gives us an abundant time. We probably could, if you ask us to, reduce that time period some, and probably by cutting off one week of running of those job ads, eight weeks is the Cadillac period of time to run those, we could reduce that to seven, for example, and reduce it in another couple of ways, but we can't shorten that process very much. What you all laid out in the RFP was certainly realistic.
And Ellis, I did want to mention to you, one of the reasons that we went ahead with some of these public input sessions was in the interest of time. You can certainly do more, but we wanted to make sure we got some of that on the front end, so the board could already be thinking about the profile before the consultant got here. But that was in the interest of meeting this schedule.
That makes perfect sense.
All right. Any other burning questions?
All right. Well, Mr. Hankins, thank you for coming up to talk to us this afternoon. It's great to see you, and look forward to talking with you further.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for hearing our proposal and considering it. It's a pleasure to be with you, and we will look forward to working hand-in-hand with you, I hope, through a successful process. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have somebody on...
Do you have somebody ready to come in? Go ahead and let Mr. Hankins.
Sure, sure thing.
And they said they had checked her out and everything, and near the end, she said, "Well, it's something you want to know."
Hi.
Nice to meet you. We generally have you stand here and make the presentation. Did you have a PowerPoint?
Yeah, I think it's loaded in.
Have y'all got his PowerPoint?
We don't.
Oh, they took it. They took it and gave it, and loaded it in.
There it is. It's loaded up.
Well, with that, I'll get started.
Thank you.
Our next company is Slavin Management Consultants. They're out of Norcross, Georgia. That's the Atlanta metro area. Mr. Slavin has well over 30 years of public sector searches under his belt. It's a very highly qualified firm, and the person doing the search, as he'll go into, is Mr. Slavin, who is the owner of the company. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. President Newman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Bob Slavin. I own a company by the name of Slavin Management Consultants. Our specialty is local government and executive recruiting, and the company has been in existence since 1991. However, I've been doing this work for a lot longer than that. We are located in Norcross, which is a three-and-a-half-hour drive from here, as I've, and a very pleasant one. The, I want to go over some of the things. You have our proposal. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the minutia and details of that, but I'll spend as much time answering questions about it as you might want. But I'd like to provide sort of an overview of who we are, what we've done, and how we do it, and some of the experience we've had with other organizations, and not just the southeast, but all over the United States. We have a national practice. We've worked in, I think, 45, maybe 46 of the 50 states. We do a number of things in addition to executive search. We do pain classification studies, performance appraisal systems, organizational studies, and a variety of other things that might be related to some of those activities. The most important function that we provide, or service we provide relative to why I'm here, is executive search. I head that division. The company was formed to do executive search, and I have religiously held on to my prerogative to do that work myself rather than delegate it to others. I have others that work with me, but I have given up opportunities to head search firms and run the executive search practice, because it would have, in doing that, it would have kept me from able, from being able to do what I love best, and that's actually the work. So, we're headquartered in Norcross, which is in Gwinnett County. Project team that I'm proposing to use for this work is myself to lead the search. Dave Krings, who is very well-known in government circles, he's been president of ICMA, he's been the president of the County Managers Association. He managed Hamilton County, which is Cincinnati, for a number of years, and other counties before that. He's worked with us for about 10 years. He's outstanding. The other person that I would propose to use is Barbara Lipscomb, who until last year was the city manager of Greenville, North Carolina. Before that, had been in Florida, working for a number of... Before that, had been in Florida, working for a number of jurisdictions, including Castleberry, Gainesville, and other places there. She's also an outstanding person. Haven't worked with her a lot. She's rather new to our company, but I am extremely impressed with her and look forward to working with her. And she lives near our offices in Gwinnett County. So, let me push the right button here. Over the years, it's been more than thirty years. I should adjust that in our boilerplate. We've conducted more than eight hundred and fifty searches. Not all of them city or county managers. A lot of them are department heads, but all of them in the local government area. We're very proud of that. More than ninety-five percent of our placements have stayed in their positions for more than the five-year average that ICMA will...statistics say that is the average tenure of a city or county manager. Ours are more like eight or nine. Approximately twenty-five percent of our placements are people from protected groups, women, minorities, and others who are in protected groups and who we have been able to present and place to our clients. I'll manage the project. I have more than thirty-five years of experience in placing city and county managers. I've talked about our team. I'm not going to repeat myself. We're based near Atlanta. It's easy to get here. We have affiliates around the United States, which creates a network which I found very useful in not only identifying candidates, but also, we do site visits with candidates, and it's helpful to have our people help us with that. Our affiliates are in Arizona, California, Connecticut, Florida, Ohio, Texas. Next slide is a listing of seventy counties that we have provided services to over the And it...the type is kind of small, because we had to...it required that to fit them on one page. And these are counties, not cities or state governments, which we've worked for, or special jurisdictions that we've worked for. These are counties. And I'm very proud of it. In fact, I worked for a county when I first got out of graduate school. I worked for Santa Clara County in California and was there for six or seven years, and actually, got my footing in county government. This is a listing of...this slide is a listing of jurisdictions in North Carolina that we've had the privilege of working for. There is one missing, and that's Carrboro. We did a Public Works Director search for them last year. I don't know...I need to add that to the list.
Do you mind if I just ask a quick question? Who did you do the search on for Asheville?
Gary Jackson. And after that, we did some work for him. It wasn't a full search, but he was doing an HR director, and he asked us to assist him with that.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. I'm just curious. Ms. Lipscomb, was Lipscomb...was the city manager in Greenville? Do you know if she was managing the city when the floods came through there and devastated?
She started there in two thousand and twelve. I think it was right after that.
Yeah, I think so. It was. It was after. You're talking about Matthew? That was in two thousand and sixteen. I was in Wayne County then.
There was one before...it was one before that.
There was a disaster.
There was one before that I'm thinking about that just was...
Commissioner, I think she was there right after that, and a lot of the remediation took place while she was there, but...
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
The process we use is really tied to your needs, not something we pull off the shelf and bring to you. And we spend a lot of time...if you looked at the way the work is distributed in our process, a lot of the time and effort we devote to it is at the beginning. And the reason for that is that if we're going to be able to really help you achieve fit, we need to know what that means here. I envision that myself, and Barbara and Dave will be here for a few days, talking with each of you, with your permission, with your staff, anybody else you want us to talk to, touring the county, and getting a really good, in-depth understanding of what this county is all about, and what your needs are, and what you'll be looking for in your next county manager. With that information, we go out and find people who meet that criteria. We'd go far beyond placing announcements and waiting for people to respond. But, we have a network. We've been in the business a long time. We know people all over the country. Once you tell us what we want, we will use that network to find people who we may already know, or may not know, who meet that criteria, and we'll contact them, provide them information about Buckland County, and encourage their interest and ask them to submit a resume. That doesn't necessarily mean they're qualified, but it does mean that they come highly recommended before we would make the initial invitation to them to respond. And then, we develop them according to your background, to your criteria, to make sure that they meet the criteria. Once we have a cadre of people who we are comfortable meet the criteria, let's say there may be ten to twelve of them, or ten to fifteen, or some number like that, we'll bring those back, those folks back to you folks, hopefully in closed session, to discuss what we know about them. At that point, we will have spoken with them on the phone, had a telephone, phonic interview with them. We will have asked them to complete a rather substantial questionnaire that is tied to your criteria, not, again, not taken off of a shelf. We develop it specifically for you. And it usually...it's extensive enough that we allow the candidates two weekends to work on it. But, you'll see that. You'll see their resume, their cover letter. We will have Googled them, but in order to do the background work, we need to get their permission to do it in order to...and that costs you money and costs a lot of time, so we'll only do that with the people who you have an interest in. But, we will ask you to take a look at that number of folks we call semifinalists, and tell us which of those folks you're interested in. And usually, we do it by having you rank them, so that we know if...let's say there's ten, because it's an easy number to discuss. Let's say that there are ten. We'll know...have you rank them, one to ten, and we will...and we also discuss how many people you want to ultimately interview. So, we will look at that list in priority order and really start focusing on the ones you're most interested in. And that means that we do site visits with them. We do all of the other background work, the references, credit, criminal, driving, education verification, and all of those things that we...it's a very, rather thorough process. We accomplish all of those, but only on the people you've expressed an interest in. And then, we'll bring those that continue to be interested and go through that process without any glitches or blemishes. We will bring those folks back to you for interview. And at that progress meeting, we will discuss when you want to do that, and what process you want to use to interview these candidates. And there are all kinds of variations of that, but we'll discuss it with you. And it'll again be your process, and I like to think of ourselves as partnering with you and providing you professional, good professional advice, and...but keeping, making sure that you folks stay in charge. Talked about a little bit of this. We will assist the board to design a tailored interview process and selection process that meets your needs and that you're comfortable with, and will provide extensive information to you about each of these candidates. It takes the form of a report in which you'll have rating sheets, sample interview questions, things that you can't ask because they're illegal, the summary of background work, the reference report information, the credit, criminal, and driving information. You'll have that. You'll have...by that time, we will know when you want to interview and how you want to do it, and there'll be a schedule in there. It'll be a pretty complete workbook for you to facilitate that interview process. And of course, we'll be there for the interviews. Once you make a selection, we can help you throughout the interview process and help with the process of selecting somebody. That's your decision, not ours, but we can help facilitate that. And then, once you do that, we'll help facilitate an employment agreement between the person you choose and the county. Usually, that's done through partnering with me, the board chairman, and your attorney, and the candidate. And it usually is a process that goes pretty smoothly. If we've done our work right, and the candidate's really interested, and the numbers are able to fit together nicely, it's a feature of our proposal that we can handle and handle quite well. We facilitate the establishment of first-year performance goals. Those aren't county goals, but performance goals between the board and the county manager. The idea being that if everybody's on the same page, it's easier to evaluate performance than if not. And then, we stick with you for the first year. If for some reason, the process isn't...or the relationship isn't going smoothly, we'll want to know that, and if it can be adjusted, we'll try to work with you to help adjust it. If it can't, then we'll be the first to suggest that you make a change. We're committed to your success. We'll keep working for the county until you have a successful placement. Hopefully, and usually, that comes with that first group of candidates. If it doesn't, we keep working for you. We'll redo the search at no additional professional fee if the person you employ is not on your payroll during...for any reason within the first two years. We'll never recruit that person from this organization, and we won't recruit your employees. And our company, the clients are clients for two years, so we won't recruit anybody from Buncombe County during that two-year period, and we will never actively recruit your county manager. Process usually takes ninety days, from the time we have a recruitment profile approved to the time you're interviewing candidates. Sometimes it's a little...it used to be that ninety days was required. Now, with everything...with a lot of our advertising and announcement processes and electronic, we can sometimes do it quicker. We're prepared to begin. We can begin within fifteen days of your approval of a contract. Fees, you know about. The fee that we've proposed is fifteen thousand, sixty-five dollars, plus expenses. And those expenses include everything except bringing candidates to you. But, it does include our going to candidates for the site visits. If we don't spend that money, you don't pay it. If we spend more than that to do the work that we propose to do, we don't bill you for that. So, the total that you would be providing to us under our proposal would be twenty-three three, fifty, seventy-five, or less. Questions?
All right. Mr. Slavin, thank you so much. Who would like to start us off?
Yeah, I guess we can start off like we did last time. I'll go ahead. I'm...we met earlier. You was...
Yes, I was still...I stole your office.
Your office. I walked in. I went, "Oh, there's a guy in the mall." Okay. Our first question is, given the ongoing federal criminal investigation that has now resulted in former county manager into assistant county managers being indicted, how will that affect how you recruit for a new county manager? What's your thoughts on that?
That I need to find out as much about it as I can, that...and hopefully, it's something that's in the past, not in the future. It will not have a positive effect on the recruitment, but it shouldn't have too much of a negative effect, assuming it can be explained professionally and that there's nothing here that would cause...nothing here that would be a...nothing...no residual effect of that would have...that would cause the next manager not to be successful. So, you know, it puts an added importance on making sure that outreach networking is comprehensive and thorough, because it could be that if people just saw an ad, that might scare them away.
Mr. Slavin, mic for our Commissioner. How would you communicate with the Board of Commissioners and the internal county...intern county manager on the process throughout this search?
I would ask you to...first of all, as I said a moment ago, we feel that we're successful of being able to form a partnership with you. And that's one of the things that we'll want to discuss early on, is how you want that to happen. We'll provide frequent reports to you, and I would ask that the county's designator liaison for us to be the primary point of contact, so that we can make sure that information flows easily and transparently and gets to all of you at the same time. And mostly, what we need from you folks are collaborative relationship that allows for meetings to be...to take place, for information to be distributed on time, and for us to get feedback back from you. So, I don't know how you want that done. The initial contact will be directly, one-on-one, and collectively, if you want. And then, we're back for...at least three times during this process, we are here in person. Beginning, we spend a lot of time. At the progress meeting, we're here for a day. And at the interview stage, we're here for whatever long...whatever time that takes.
Mr. Slavin, Robert Presley. Question is, the Board of Commissioners is conducting some citizen input sessions and a department head input session over the next two weeks. How would you dovetail those efforts into your citizens' engagement process and the creation of a county manager profile?
It's not...I had misunderstood. I thought you had already done it. And what I was going to ask for is the results of those meetings. If you haven't already done it, and you...and we're privileged enough to be selected, possibility for us to be there for some of those meetings. We definitely need the results of them, and we definitely...and want...it's critical to us. One of the things about us being involved with those meetings, even if it's just to sit back and listen to them, is we get a really interesting flavor of the texture of the community from those meetings that we wouldn't otherwise get. And with staff, we get a real strong feeling of the culture of the organization from meeting with senior staff folks, so...and you have gone through some trauma here. It might be helpful for us to be part of...as much a part of that as we can without delaying, without causing our participation to delay the process. I don't know, but it's something we need to talk about, and we find it to be extremely important to hear from people. Never doubt in our mind that we work for this elected body and not for anybody else. So, everything that comes to us from any other source, we provide to you, but it's helpful for us to hear it.
Yeah, and these ones supposed to have been done several weeks ago. We didn't have enough time to get out to constituents, give them adequate time to be there.
Are you planning on doing that yourselves?
Yeah, and we will also have them recorded, so we can provide it with all of them.
Oh, good. That would be helpful. We did it in Greensboro. We did Charettes, and we did them...we must have been there...I can't remember how long, but it was several days, and we would meet at different times during the day, so that people who were working during the day could be there at night, and people who were found it uncomfortable to be out at night could be there during the day. We must have done four or five of them.
I am Jasmine Beach-Ferrara. Quickly, just to follow up on Commissioner Belcher's initial question, could you talk with us a little bit about some of the characteristics that you think we might be looking for in the type of county manager who could step into the climate here in Buncombe and help lead us into the new chapter that we need to head into?
Well, I think integrity and honesty and transparency is something that's necessary all the time, but it's going to be something that's really going to have to be emphasized here, just to help you get over what you've been through. And obviously, a person needs to have the credentials and the experience and the success record sufficient for us to know that they can do this work, and that's...once you tell us what it is, that, you know, it's easy to look at a job description and say, "Yeah, we need people who've done this," but you need to translate that into what's happening here, and what your expectations are. What's on your list of goals and aspirations for the short, medium, and long term? Because this person's going to have to help you get there. What are some of the issues and problems that he or she will face simply because it's here and now? Because that might determine whether the person's interested in the job. And also, might...if we know that, and we know the person's strengths, we can kind of match strengths to your...and skills to your needs. You know, the more...so, if I drill down a little bit further, I'd get into very stereotypical things like, you know, ability to manage an organization... things like, you know, ability to manage an organization of 1,500 employees and an $813 million operating budget, and ability to develop, to hire, develop, and make best use of staff. And all those things are kind of trite unless you don't have them, and then they're major importance. So we can talk about that. It's one of the things I want to hear from you folks, what the particulars are.
Thanks, that's helpful. Another question, and you've touched on this a bit, but just if we could review it one more time. How many onsite visits would your proposal assume? And if you could walk us through again, when in the process they would take place?
This progress meeting, again, there'd be as many as, it could be as many as 15 candidates. At that meeting, I would ask you folks to take a look at what we know, realizing there's a lot that we won't know at that point, but what we know about them, and ask you to rank them. And again, I like the number 10 because it's easy to use. If you ranked the group of candidates from 1 to 10, we would look at those. And then we had some idea of how many you would like to interview. Let's say you want to interview five. You rank them 1 to 10. And we would do site visits on probably as many as seven of those folks because folks could drop out because we dropped them out or because they drop out. So I'd like to have done those site visits on more than the people that you plan to interview. And it can be, it sounds like, it sounds like it's an expensive process, and it is, but we have help. I have people who worked for me for, Dave for 10 years, Randy Frank for 15, Paul Winbrow on the West Coast for more than 15. The advantage of that and the way I use them is we share information among our clients, client information. They will know what your thoughts are and what your needs are. And they will have seen the results of my meetings with you. And this county is large enough, so I would expect that the candidates will come from a wider region than the southeast. So if, unless I'm going someplace for another reason, I would use Dave to do Midwest site visits and Paul to do West Coast site visits, Randy to do Northeast site visits. They do them very well, and they know what we're looking for. And I would do the ones around here, or Barbara would. So. And there's no magic answer to that. If you wanted us to do 10, we'd do 10. It's very seldom necessary, though.
Mr. Slavin, what else will you need from the Board of Commissioners and county staff to complete the process successfully?
Initially, we need as much, a lot of this is online, but we need your budget, organization chart, goals, list of challenges, things a person's going to face, your budget, the audited financial statement, photographs, put a brochure together, and what else? I'd probably mention org charts. If there, a list of your benefits. I think, I'm probably forgetting something, but that's the type, the type of information we need.
Great.
We need information about the community, too. Presumably, we'll be selling this to people who know the Asheville area, and it might be a little less important. But we're also selling it to people who are trying to market it to people who may never have been here.
Sure.
Welcome to Asheville, Robert. I'm Al Whiteside, County Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to ask two questions because I skipped one the last time. So I'll ask the one I skipped and then the one I did ask. Will you need some temporary office space to conduct your work while you're here?
Usually, we just have a conference room.
That's what I thought. Now, the important one, both the city of Asheville and the city of Greenville, South Carolina are actively seeking city managers. Asheville, we're about three months ahead, but they're ahead of us in this process, and we're not sure where Greenville is. In your opinion, what impact will that have on our applicant pool?
Asheville ought to be, well, public meeting, I'm going to be a little cautious about what I say. Asheville will most likely attract attention from a lot of interested and qualified people. Greenville's had a reputation of, it's improved, but it's got a reputation for hiring managers and then not, who don't last a long time and who, well, I'm going to go with that. I don't think that will be as attractive an opportunity for, for folks as this will and as the city of Asheville will. And I suspect Asheville will be finished before we really get into this. I don't know where they are with it. I'm not, we did a proposal to help them, but I haven't heard anything. I know they're well into the search. I don't know how they're doing it.
Thanks.
I'm Ellen Frost. I'm going to ask two questions as well. So one, one just goes back to the references and so on.
I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
Back to references and background checks. Because we know that if someone had done that with our first manager that's now been indicted, she would have glowing references. She was recognized around the country as one of the top county managers. So what do you do to combat things like that?
Well, the unfortunate reality is you can tell what people have done, but you can't tell what they're going to do all the time.
Well, she was in the process of doing it for years while she had this glowing reputation, which is.
Well, I would be hopeful that something in the background work we do will alert us to drill a little deeper.
Right.
And being on premises, one of the things, the site visits are very interesting because they take place at the point in time when you've already selected the candidates and we're doing background work on them.
Right.
So, and we caution them that although we're not going to do anything that would cause them, the process to get them fired, we will be there on their premises, and they better tell their present employer that they're interested in this job because we have no intention of disclosing that. But we do referencing, and the references, if there is a leak, the references frequently are the cause of the leak. And when we're there, if we could talk to a variety of people, and we don't just stick with the references people have on their list. Quite often, when we ask for references, the references they give us are the same ones we would put on the list anyway. They're mayors and council members and former council members. What we find kind of insightful is to go to the community that they worked in prior to that one, and these folks presumably have a much lesser stake in the candidates. We ask them questions. And then we look at all the information we gather and see whether it's consistent or not.
Right.
If it is, make some kind of a guesstimate as to whether or not we're getting good The only times I'm aware of when my company's been involved in something that has been, that was unfortunate, is when there was a client that did not follow our advice. And I'll give you an example without mentioning any names. We had a community in the southeast that wanted a downtown development executive and wanted that person to be a person of color. We did the recruitment, got a lot of response to it, but what we lacked was the diversity in the group. And we tried, but we weren't able to do it. And one of the candidates that applied, but we didn't recommend, was African-American. And they ultimately, to save a lot of time, they pulled that person from a stack of folks that we did not recommend and hired him, pulled him aside and hired him against our advice. But we did not know what ultimately was going to happen. We pulled him out because there was an uncertainty about what he, it looked like he lived in two different places at the same time. One of them in, up near Washington, the other one in Texas. And the referencing we were doing was from people in both places, and both of them were saying very good things about this guy, but it didn't make any sense. I mean, you can't, it just didn't make any sense. So we asked him about it, and he didn't provide any kind of satisfaction to it, so we just didn't recommend him. Turns out, he did have a residence in Maryland, but he was in prison in Texas.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. And that happened, unfortunately, the referencing process is governed by the Fair Credit Reporting Act, which allows you to go back seven years.
Right.
We're frequently quite lucky and fortunate that our services provide information that goes back further than that, but we can't legally ask for that. The event that put him in jail was prior, was more than seven years before that. Okay. So he's hired. And two years later, he's fired. And he's fired because he, for double payrolling. He has his wife and a girlfriend on that payroll. You know, the thing about that, I felt horrible about it, but the thing bothers me is that we did what we were supposed to do. And our client didn't.
Okay. So this goes, so now my official question. Can you please review your guarantees for the following? A, if the Buncombe County Commission is not comfortable with the finalist after completing the interview process? And B, if Buncombe County's selection does not stay with Buncombe County for at least two years?
Number one, we keep working for you until you are happy. And we'll want to talk to you about why it's not happening. If we are having trouble getting, finding people who qualify and getting them to apply, you'll hear about that long before the interviews because something will have to be adjusted. If, but, you know, it's more than theoretically possible that you don't see the person in that group of five that you interview that you think fits the needs of the county or that you can't agree to it. When that's the case, we keep working until, we want to talk to you about why not, but we'll keep working until we have some, a candidate that, we present to you a candidate that you, or slated candidates, that you can choose somebody that you're satisfied with. If that person leaves your employ within the first two years for any reason, including death, we will redo the search for the cost of the, without any additional professional fees. We'll have to charge you for our expenses.
Okay.
The, we've, I've been, that guarantee, I've been working in this business since the late 70s, not always for my own company, but always for, under that guarantee and for First Corn Fairy, and then I worked with one of the other people who you're interviewing for a while. We've had to honor that guarantee three times in over 800 searches. One time, somebody died. Another time, somebody quit on his own, two weeks before the two years was up. And he sees me at meetings and he kind of cringes a little bit, but as it turned out, it had a happy ending. The other time was a council, there was an election between the time the person was selected and the time they were to start, and there was not a major change expected as a result of that election. All but one of the elected officials was either defeated or chose at the last minute not to run. It wasn't, the new elected body liked the city manager well enough, but he didn't like them. It was a change in direction that he wasn't, it was a rather progressive council to one that wanted to, to go back to, to a situation that they had had years before.
Thank you.
So the point I'm trying to make is that we've put so much money, so much time and effort in the beginning of the process that we, that we feel we are pretty comfortable, we feel pretty comfortable saying that we do fit pretty well.
All right. We've got one last, I think you touched on this earlier, but just to make sure we ask all of the questions the same. Could you tell us specifically how you will check the applicant's backgrounds and particularly their personal, their personal integrity? And again, I know you touched on this briefly before, but just to.
Well, a lot of the technical background work we do, other than the referencing, suggests that. We do credit and criminal and driving record and the criminal and civil records. If there's something wrong with any of, or something glitched with any of that, we'll look a little deeper to find out why. If there's a DUI, we want to know more about it. If there's a bankruptcy, we want to know more about it. So that can give us a glimpse into that. But we spend a lot of time with the referencing. And we talked, as I've indicated earlier, not just to people who are on their list, but we want to talk to people who they've worked for, who have worked for them, who were previous colleagues. And a lot of the questions that we're asking have to go right to that integrity thing. And then if they have had problems with previous jobs, it doesn't necessarily mean they caused the problem, but we want to know why and how they handled it. And, you know, you get to the point where, the other thing I'll suggest, getting back to what I was talking about earlier, about the person that had the criminal record that we didn't know about. Your sheriff's office can do work we can't do. We can get into records we can't get into, and it might not be a bad idea to have he or she do that for the last two or three candidates.
Interesting. Interesting. Hey, Commissioners, we've gone through our standard questions. Any other questions folks have?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Could you go into a little more detail on your onsite visits?
Yeah.
Who would you typically want to see in that?
Let's assume it's a county manager. We'll want to talk to, certainly there's, first of all, we don't want to get them fired. So, well, nobody really knows while we're there, why we are there except a few folks. The few folks are the candidate and some select group of references that we've asked he or she to make available to us. And among that group, we'd like to sit face-to-face with people they've worked for, their county board, maybe the chairman or board members, previous board members. And maybe if there was somebody that they had a conflict with that isn't a supporter of that person, we want to talk to them and find out why. We'd like to talk to senior staff if we can without getting the person fired or creating a lame duck situation for he or she.
Ask them who they would.
We typically ask them, we give them a list of folks we'd like to talk to and see whether they can arrange it.
Okay. What is your, what is your take about having a, like an open forum for the last candidates? And give us the pros and cons of that.
I'm very much an advocate of it because it tends to make your constituents have, satisfies them that they're part of the process. Particularly if you start the process by involving them. At the end of the process, you ask them to, you give them an opportunity to meet the folks who you're interviewing. And then, and I think it has a very positive impact. I personally think a meet and greet arrangement or some kind of a opportunity for them to be in a group setting could be simple meet and greet, could be that the candidates make a presentation before the group and then go into a meet and greet. Could be a lot of different ways of doing it. The negative would be if you let anybody rank or rate candidates other than this group because then you have to, you're running the risk of them not agreeing with you. So the other thing about it is that, the other advice I would have is that it be done on a group of people who you've already decided are okay. So one way to do that is to maybe interview five and then bring two or three back for a second, more in-depth opportunity to be in the community. And at that time, have the meet and greet. By that time, you know you could live with either of those people. What I'm trying to recommend, you avoid, is pretty obvious, I guess, that your constituency wants people who you don't. And then all of the good efforts that you've made to involve them become an exercise in frustration.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? What, you know, what percentage of candidates who are amongst that pool of like the finalists, the shortlists would typically not agree to do that kind of public interview process if there's still, you know, at least one other, maybe multiple candidates? Because obviously, they're now, it's going to be public that they're considering a job in another community, and so folks back home will know that they're, you know, they're actively considering leaving, which maybe, maybe that causes them to get a promotion back home. But obviously, in a lot of cases, it can be at least a little uncomfortable.
It can be a lot uncomfortable, but I don't have, I don't know of a lot of times that people won't do it unless there's a real reason for it. And the reason is usually gets to something that would cause you not to want to hire the person. They understand these processes. understand these processes. They understand the value of the process. They understand the job they're, they're applying for. They understand the importance of it in the community. So, it may be uncomfortable for them, but usually they'll do it. And also, it's kind of interesting to, kind of, when it goes against my earlier career advice that I used to get, when I was in HR, that you never let two candidates see each other. Well, I'll tell you that regardless of what we do to keep this process confidential, by the time these candidates get here, assuming they're all in the county or city manager business, they will probably know at least one or, one or more of the people that they're interviewing, competing with. The other thing that I would advise that you think about with either the group of five or if you do bring big people back with a smaller group, is tours of the community. And sometimes those tours, which is kind of hard to understand how they can accept that, are tours with, in a bus and all the candidates are there. That's uncomfortable, but they do it. And I don't, I think to the most important point of your questions, I have had nobody turn down a job because of that. I have had folks turn down jobs when they know they're going to be evaluated by a psychiatrist. And the backdrop was Florida where everything is open and the concern was, well, this is all public and I don't want my present employer or the people who I'll be competing with to be, to have access to that. And I have to tell you, I believe, I understood what he was saying. And I did caution my client to be very careful with that information. And what they ended up doing was doing it, but only on one person.
If you did a personality inventory on them, do you have to release that?
Well, it was debatable as to whether they would. And in Florida, they shouldn't. And there were some exemptions, exceptions to that law, but it's pretty omnibus law. And every time it's been tried, that I'm aware of, it's been expanded. So that's where we got with the lawyer, with the city lawyer, city attorney at that point, was we can probably try to protect it, but if we're challenged, we're most likely going to have to give it. The other incident in Florida where that happened was somebody applied for a job who had been a city manager in a well-known community in Florida. And in order to get that job, he had to go through an industrial psychological evaluation. Well, when he submitted his resume for the job that I was handling, he included that with it. And, and not only did he include the results of it, but he included who, who else took those tests and how he ranked against them. And I called him before, you know, I probably, I said, will you please reconsider this? Because not only does it show you as, as ranking higher or scoring higher than any of these folks, but it shows who you scored higher than. And these folks are your colleagues. And some of them are working and right here in the state. So he did withdraw that. And as far as I know, my client never knows, never, to this day, doesn't know he submitted it.
I have one other question. In thinking about candidates for the county manager position, local government experience, obviously, very important. And do you have any thoughts you would share about the importance of municipal and county management experience? Like, so for example, maybe we have a, an applicant or applicants who have, have a stellar reputation and have worked in various city governments for 20 years and they're applying for the job, but have never been a county manager. Or, so any thoughts about, because we're going to have, we're going to have a pool of candidates with, with both, right?
Yes, sir. Well, it's a little less important here because you're a commission manager, former government, unlike a lot of counties where it's a county, where the county administrator actually works. The position has got lesser responsibilities than, than, than a lot of the city managers do. And you only have, as I understand it, the commission and two other elected department heads, registrar of deeds and the sheriff. A lot of counties have a lot more than that. So, and one of the concerns expressed by my clients who onboard in those counties is we need to find somebody who is more collaborative than most city managers because they don't have the authority in this jurisdiction that they would have. They have to prepare budgets and administer budgets, but they have to collaborate with the sheriff and with registrar of deeds and the treasurer and whoever else is elected. So it does make a difference. But here, I think it's lesser of a challenge. If I read things accurately, you appoint the manager and he or she has pretty much full management authority over the organization. I think may have to get your approval to, on hires and fires. But otherwise, they have pretty much, their authority is pretty much what a city manager would be. So, I don't know whether I'm avoiding your question or answering it, but I don't think it's as important here as it might be otherwise. And I would strongly advise you not to eliminate city managers from the pool.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Robert, thank you so much for coming to talk to us today. We appreciate you being here in person to talk to us about your company and your experience. And you bring a great deal of experience to the table, so we really appreciate the chance to speak with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to tell you that Lynn sent the email to us on Friday and my office, I was gone. I was with a client in Illinois. And one of my colleagues is scheduling interviews with one of our clients. And this, the email from the county showed up as an, as a interview, a request for interview. And I looked at it. My office manager's on vacation, but I thought, well, that's just got, this is Randy dealing with her clients. And then yesterday, thank God Lynn called and said, is he going to be here or not? And I said, where? And where? So, this was, I appreciate the opportunity, but it was kind of a rush. I would have brought Barbara with me if we could have arranged it differently. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
All right. Mr. Wood, do you have any other thoughts you would share with us now about kind of next steps or process?
Well, at this point, it's really up to y'all as to go through a process of evaluating them and which one you want us to negotiate a contract with, if that's where you want to go.
Okay. And the decision, so this was, I'm glad we had this in open session. It was very informative. It's also required that this be held in open session.
Right.
And the vote to, to hire one of these firms, we'll need to make that out here as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and does the, and what does the timeframe you'd like for us to act on that?
Well, we'd like to move as soon as possible, but obviously, you guys need to be comfortable with whatever decision you make. But the, but your deliberations also have to be public. This is not something you can go into closed session on because the closed session exemption is when you're discussing the qualifications of an employee, not, not a company.
And we couldn't, we cannot make that decision today. Are you envisioning that we might make it in two weeks?
Well, you could, you could if you wanted to, but it's up to you.
Well, so let me, let me ask this. Could we do it under the present agenda item? I'm just thinking about our meeting this evening. It's not on the agenda.
You, you can do it now or if you could-
By consensus.
Or if you wanted to, you could, if all of you were in agreement, you could add it to the agenda for tonight's meeting. That would have to be unanimous.
Okay. I'm comfortable adding it.
I am, too.
I am, too.
All right. I think, I think we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to, well, does anyone have any concerns about adding it to the agenda?
I don't.
Okay. Sounds like there is a consensus to at least deliberate further. If we get to a decision, we'll, we'll see. We may or may not. But we'll, we'll add it to the agenda so we have the ability to talk further.
So we'll, we'll discuss it at that, at that time in an open session.
Yes.
Yeah. That's cool.
All right.
So just to, just to summarize, it might be helpful. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I guess I will. It'd be good to know now and maybe in the meeting, how many, where we started, just to summarize where we started and how we got to here.
We originally sent this packet out to 13 firms. We found out about two more and our purchasing manager sent those out. So we, we actually sent it out to 15 firms. Eight responded. And just, just to remind everybody, the chairman appointed a five-member committee and that was Mr. Belcher, Jasmine, three-member committee. Well, it was five. It was three commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
It was, it was Al, Joe and Jasmine. And then myself. And also, we had Eric Hardy.
He was on the CFO.
He was on the CFO. It was these four. It was the four of us.
Yeah, four of us.
Okay. I'm getting these things mixed up.
That's a lot of work, man.
It was the four of us.
Yes.
And we narrowed it down to these two.
Yes.
And made a recommendation to you to invite them in for these interviews. And that's how we got to this place.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else we need to take care of before we adjourn this part of the meeting?
No, sir.
All right. Well, we will adjourn and we will be back at 5:00 PM for the regularly scheduled county commission meeting.